Uh, Mr. Shields.
Here.
Ms. Wittergren.
Here.
Mr. Broad. You might be on mute, Bob. Oh, are you? I see Bob, but I can't, Bob, we can't hear you. He's over here.
Looks like he was coming on and off mute.
Right. But we do know that he's here, so we got that. Okay, I'm gonna move on. We know Bob is here. Mr. Johnny?
Here.
Mr. Bozer?
Here.
Mr. Matika?
Yeah, here.
Thank you, Mercy. Um, the number two, the next item on the agenda are the uh minutes, the approval of the minutes for March fifth, two thousand twenty, uh, regular meeting. Um, Commissioners, if you've had a chance to review those minutes and there are no changes or additions, we'd be ready for motion regarding the approval of those minutes.
Well, moved.
Is that Mike, Mr. Matika moved?
Yeah.
And it looked like Mr. Shields was seconding.
Second, yeah.
Okay, I guess I'll call the roll then. Uh, Mr. Shields?
Hi.
Ms. Wittergren? Oh, you're on mute, Tracy.
Yes, can you hear me?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Mr. Mr. Broad?
No, I'm on.
Uh, Mr. Johnny?
Hi.
Mr. Bozer?
Yeah, hi.
Mr. Matika?
Hi.
And Mr. Zimmerman? Great.
All right, the uh, next item on the agenda is a public hearing, uh, two zero dash zero five dash zero four P C zoning text amendment uh, for One Normal Plaza P U D, the northeast uh, intersection of Beach and Pine. Um, Mercy, please provide some detail with regard to what we'll be discussing this evening.
Sure, and I'll just pause for a moment because I know Mr. Broad planned to recuse himself, but if he's having audio trouble, he may actually have trouble recusing himself. So, um, Mr. Broad, are you there?
I believe he mentioned he was going to reboot and come back in, or?
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Well, we'll see if he does that. Taylor can let us know if um, Taylor Long, the Associate Planner, is running the waiting room, so he may be letting Mr. Broad back in. So let's see.
Mercy, I, yeah, Mercy, I just let him back in, so he should be able to hear us, I think.
Oh, great, okay. Mr. Broad, we were just giving you an opportunity to recuse yourself, so if you want to try taking yourself off a mute, you could say that. Uh, I don't know, I think, I think it's a tech failure. Now we can't even see you, Mr. Broad. Um, I'm going to just, for the sake of the meeting, uh, just let everyone know in the public that Mr. Broad is recusing himself. Um, he is, he actually is a part owner in property within One Normal Plaza, and that is uh, so he will be unable to participate in the discussion, so um, he's stepping away. So I'll just go on with my presentation. Um, first of all, thanks to everyone for participating, especially the members of the public who are, have gone through quite a bit of um technology hoops to get to this meeting. I hope it works well for everyone. If it does not, um, bear in mind that this is being recorded. It will be available on YouTube pretty shortly after this meeting ends, so anyone who wants to re-watch the meeting, if you want to refer any of your fellow neighbors to watch it, it will be there. Um, we are also going to carry this item over to the July ninth meeting of the Planning Commission, where there will be another opportunity for public comment. Um, given the length of my summary that I'm about to give you, I will not be repeating that again in July, uh, so you'll have to watch the recording if you miss it this time. Um, we'll also be posting minutes to the town's website in the next few days. Um, so I'll just start by saying that the One Normal Plaza development, which I'll, I'll bring up a map really quick. So the, on your screen, you should see a map of One Normal Plaza. It is an area of the community at the uh northeast uh, corner of Beach and um Pine. It's a very historic site. It's the original home of the Illinois Soldiers and Sailors Children's Home. It ceased to be an orphanage in the late seventies, was transferred um, through some private property owners, and ended up being a combination of ownership between the town of Normal and multiple different property owners. Today, the town primarily owns the park spaces that you see, the food forest area, the Community Activity Center Building, which includes the theater, um, a community garden space, and for the most part, the rest of it is in private, in private hands. Um, the, when the town, when basically the state stopped owning it, um, the town had to figure out how the zoning code applied to this, this large property, and in the late eighties, early nineties, we created a planned unit development for this, this area. Um, a planned unit development is kind of an, uh, like an alternative type of zoning that applies to areas of the community that don't fit neatly into our conventional zoning code, and there's certainly not much conventional about One Normal Plaza. Um, basically, at the time, in nineteen ninety-ish, the code was written to permit what you see out there, um, under the guise of like C one office district zoning, along with um, uses that you could find in S one, which is the university district. I guess they thought maybe the university might buy property out there someday. Um, you can also do things that are permitted under S two, public lands and institutions. Um, you can do things in One Normal Plaza that are permitted in single-family zoning and also in multifamily zoning. But the code does specifically prohibit a hand, about ten uses um outright. I guess in nineteen ninety, they thought the following uses were particularly problematic, so you cannot have a correctional institution, a criminal rehabilitation center, dormitories, farms, fraternities or sororities, gas plants or facilities, industrial centers, rooming houses, a landfill, or a zoo. So those were in ninety, the nineteen ninety, the uses that were taken away um, from One Normal Plaza, but other than that, you can do anything that's permitted in C one, S one, S two, or single-family or multifamily. So it might surprise people to know that a whole lot of land uses are actually permitted out here now. They just have never been implemented. Um, currently, all of the land uses that you find in the code for the One Normal Plaza area are able to be implemented anywhere in One Normal Plaza, so right now, you could convert one of the single-family homes on the north end of the property to something more commercial. Um, you could do multifamily anywhere out there, um, with the exception of like a rooming house or a Greek, like fraternity house. Um, so right, so the code was written to just apply across the board um, to the whole property. Um, some of the other permitted uses are, you know, you could have a small, like a restaurant, or a bakery, or a barber shop out here, as long as it's part of an office building or an office complex. So um, we've just never had it, but it is possible. Um, currently, the code only requires fifteen percent green space, so if someone redeveloped a property out here, they could um, redevelop it far more intensely than you see today. There's a lot more green space out there today than fifteen percent. Um, there are no parking requirements currently. There haven't been for thirty years. Um, it's all based on an analysis case by case. Um, so we really haven't taken a comprehensive look at One Normal Plaza since nineteen ninety. Um, why are we doing that now? Um, well, our recent adoption of our comprehensive plan highlights One Normal Plaza as a very special part of our community that warrants additional study. Um, there are a lot of unique opportunities here, given the, the unique types of buildings, the very remarkable architecture, the great green spaces, um, just the whole location, adjacency to Route sixty-six. There's just a lot about this site that's pretty special, and we've really never devoted any amount of attention to it. We've just kind of let it, let it be on its own. Um, in recent years, though, um, we've had new owners purchase Normandy Village, which is Bob and Julie Hile-Broad. Um, again, Bob, Bob Broad is on the commission. Um, they purchased Normandy Village a couple of years ago, and that's the collection of charming little children's cottages um, on the south side. Um, they have expressed interest in um, looking at One Normal Plaza in a broader way and figuring out how we might make One Normal Plaza even more successful than it is today, um, with an eye towards historic preservation and green space preservation. We also had a private citizen uh, approach us about opening, potentially opening a microbrewery in the gymnasium, and this is not a secret. He's talked to several property owners out there to see what they thought. Um, currently, you, you couldn't do that under current code, so that got us thinking. You know, we have the Normandy Village folks that are interested in looking at things. We've got this guy who's got a business plan that's interesting. We've got the hundredth anniversary of Route sixty-six coming up, so seemed like a really appropriate time to just look at the code altogether. Um, the goal, the goal that staff has in mind is that, you know, we want the area to be successful. We want it to last. Um, we want to preserve the character and the green space, but we also know that in order to keep these buildings thriving, building owners need to have a little bit more flexibility in what they can do, um, because these buildings are very um, old buildings like this are very expensive to, to up, to keep up and to improve. So we are just trying to modernize what's going on out there while keeping, keeping in mind the green space and the, the general atmosphere. So how did we approach this? We, we looked at the overall P U D and realized pretty immediately that this area is, can be distinctly broken up into four areas. Um, it really isn't appropriate to treat the whole thing the same. So we, we looked at making four sub-areas, and I'll just march through those maps really quick. Um, see, I'm using two different screens here, so. So the boys dormitory area on the north side, it's a collection of the eight homes I referred to earlier with detached garages. This sits on the north side of Oglesby. Um, to the south of that is the um, the area we call the Loop because it's on the inside of the Oglesby-Lincoln Street Loop Road, and this includes a, a mixture of institutional. There's school, there's the community center, there's a residence, there's a software company, there's a, a couple of residences, actually. There's the community gardens. It's a really interesting collection of commercial, residential, institutional. So that's sub-area two. Um, this is just an analysis of the size of the buildings and the amount of green space. Um, this is sub-area three, which is the Baby Fold and what we call the Y dorms, because they're basically the shape of a, of a Y. Um, Baby Fold, everyone's familiar with. The Y dorms is a really successful conversion of some old children's, um, basically they were dorms, into a collection of small businesses and nonprofits. That's been very successful. And then sub-area four is the Normandy cottages and the park that surrounds it, so clearly the most green space. Um, but also, this is under the owner's part of its own by the Hile-Broads, and, and the majority of it's owned by the town. So we thought by dividing this into four areas, it would just, it would lend itself to figuring out what's appropriate for each of these areas. How could they all be treated differently? What types of land uses are, um, make sense for each area, and what types of design guidelines? So we'll walk you through what we're proposing for the sub-areas, and I'll go back up to sub-area one here. Okay, so for sub-area one, right now, six of the eight buildings have single-family homeowners in them. One building is under renovation to be a single-family home, and the other um, is used as um, like an art studio space with some storage for um, the owner of the residence who lives on the south side of Oglesby in, in a different house. So this area, though, has functioned pretty much exclusively as residential since this P U D was formed, and um, it seems very appropriate to just, just codify that, you know, just treat it like what it is, it's single-family. So what we're proposing is that the land uses in here be pretty much single-family, with the ability to turn one into a duplex, so you could have a two-flat essentially, but restricting it to single-family residential requirements, so you could only have two unrelated people living in a unit. Um, under current code, with multifamily being a permitted use in here, you could actually split one of these up into two units and have four people live in each one. Um, we think that because the single-family character of this has pretty, pretty well been maintained for all these years, it would be appropriate to just stick with single-family. Um, the way we're proposing it, the basic amount of green space out there would be maintained. The couple of houses that never built a detached garage would certainly be able to do that. Um, we would prohibit subdividing off any of the land on the west end to create different lots that face beach. Um, so I guess in short, this area just kind of maintains its current character, but, but in a way that is codified. Um, so we'll look at.
Mercy, real, real quick, this, this is actually more restrictive than what, you, you talked about fifteen percent green space, and then how it, this uh, C one uh, um, multi-office park um, applied to all of it. This is actually being, because a lot of the, the conversation that I've heard was about how it was more expanded. This is actually more restrictive.
Yeah, it would be accurate to say that this area would become more restricted. Um, and we have talked to the property owners throughout the whole One Normal Plaza, but specific to these folks, the ones that we were able to speak with, all seem to be in favor of this approach. Um, of course, it's not too late for them to change their minds, but um, we had actually talked to them about, maybe these houses are big enough, because they are big houses. Maybe people want to have the ability to do something bigger than just a home-based business that you could do elsewhere in town, and that didn't really go over very well. Um, people aren't really interested in anyone having employees coming and going, or the public coming and going, so, so this would be, this would be a, a tightening up of regulations in this area, for sure. So.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, I apologize.
No, 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 it's a good point. Um, within the sub-area two, we'd be looking at requiring pretty much the green space you see out there. We assigned fifty percent green space as a minimum for each lot, in case somebody wanted to add on, or there is one lot in there that the town owns that could potentially someday be developed. So fifty percent green space would help maintain what's out there. Elsewhere in town, the minimum green space is twenty percent. So maintaining a fifty percent green space requirement is significant, um, but it's appropriate for this location. Um, we would continue to leave the parking restrictions in place, which are basically a case-by-case analysis based on who's coming in. Um, we'd limit signs. Right now, it's not real clear what the sign limitations are in here, so we would be looking at no, no signs on a pole, like you might see out on a commercial strip. It would just be monument signs, wall signs that are sized appropriately to the development. Um, we're looking at limiting hours of operation, which is a little unusual. There aren't many parts of the zoning code that talk about hours of operation, but uh, it certainly can be done, and in this area, we think it's appropriate. So in this area, we're talking about limiting hours of operation until ten o'clock, Sunday through Thursday, and until eleven o'clock on Friday and Saturday, and that's just for businesses with a public interface. If Mira Software wants to have its software programmers working till two in the morning, I don't care. But if it's got a public interface, like any sort of eating establishment or that sort of thing, we'd want to keep it uh, limited in the hours. Um, within this area, we would be talking about opening up the land uses a bit, so that a lot of the land uses that could already happen here, if they were in an off, inside an office building or part of an office complex, could just exist on their own. So like, right now, you couldn't have these things, but we think they're appropriate, like a barber shop or a beauty shop, a deli, um, a, a little drugstore, a dry cleaner, um, that sort of thing. So we know that, we know that these things could exist today, but we think they should, if they're in an office building, but we think it would work fine if they were standing on their own. Um, we are proposing that the size of certain land uses be limited, because this is not a large area, and there is not a ton of parking, so we would be looking at restricting to five thousand square feet businesses like, well, there's only just a few of them, an arcade, a billiard hall, a bowling alley, an eating and drinking establishment, or some sort of fitness or gym type of facility. So five thousand square foot apiece, but you could only have twenty thousand square feet total of any of those. So we are cognizant that certain things do generate a little more parking demand, or a little bit, um, can be a little busier, so we think that by placing a size restriction on the most likely busy places, um, that it would seem really reasonable, like it would work really well. Um, sub-area three, we are looking at, you know, preserving the primarily institutional and small, like the small-scale business aspect of it, and this does back up to Savannah Green, so um, we're looking at maintaining quite a bit of green space, just like in sub-area two, continuing to monitor parking on a case-by-case basis. Sign limitations would be the same as sub-area two. Um, and then the limit of, um, the hours of operation would be limited to ten P M. every day, for, again, with public business. Um, we would have some uses that are permitted, uh, that are kind of new, that would be like a bank, or a dry cleaner, or a daycare, that sort of thing, um, that could be limited in size. Um, so we wouldn't be looking at any sort of residential over in this area, um, unless it's part of an institutional use, like if Baby Fold ever wanted to um, take in kids again, that, that would be fine. Um, we weren't really looking at having any small-scale retail in these buildings, but the owner did ask, he did say that, you know, given his druthers, he would love to be able to have a little retail, just because of its flexibility for him. Not that, you know, he would expect any big outcry for it, but um, you know, a small amount of retail space over here is something he's interested in. Um, and then if we look at sub-area four, for, for sub-area four, that's where we have the greatest amount of green space, and so we'd be looking for even more green space over here. Um, parking would be treated the same, just case by case. Um, the way this is written, you could potentially build one more cottage on this property, but that would be about it, um, just based on the size of the property and what's going on there now. Um, signs would be extremely limited. Um, the hours of operation, we're looking at the same as sub-area two, so it would be limited to ten o'clock, Sunday through Thursday, and then eleven o'clock on Friday and Saturday. Um, residential would continue to be permitted in the small-scale types of personal office use types of things. Um, but we would uh, permit eating and drinking establishments at the small scale, like of up to five thousand square feet. So um, and again, the owners have asked us, like, well, what about a small amount of retail here? And we hadn't really considered it. It's not in our current code amendment, but it's certainly something that could be discussed. So I'll just end with a couple of thoughts that, um, you know, there just, there are limiting factors out here that will just naturally limit what goes on at One Normal Plaza. Um, there are a lot of land uses that have been permitted here for thirty years, and none of them have happened, and there's a reason for that. It's not easy to work with really old building stock like this. Um, old buildings are exceptionally expensive to rehab and maintain and to modernize, um, which is part of why we're here. We, if we want these buildings to remain and be successful and be cared for, we really need to allow the, the property owners to have a little bit more flexibility in uh, what they're able to do in them to justify the expense of, of keeping these up. Um, there's, you know, it's, it's a great part of town, but there aren't the kind of traffic counts on these roads that would attract any sort of major anything, you know, to be honest. It's not, no national retailer is, is gonna say, this is the spot for us. Um, it's just not the right setting. Plus, we're, our size restrictions wouldn't, wouldn't appeal to them either. Um, as far as some concerns that I've received from the public, I just want to talk about those really quickly, just to get that, that out there. Um, some people are concerned that this zoning code amendment will somehow mean that the town is gonna get rid of the park, the park space, or develop it, or sell it. That, that's just not being discussed at all. Um, we, we have no plans for our green space, except to maintain it, and I think, you know, some of these guidelines actually codify the retention of a lot of green space. Um, some folks were worried that this was, like, just gonna trigger a, a ton of public investment. Um, it's, it's really not. This is a zoning code change, so this is only talking about what private property owners can do with their properties by way of land use. Um, this, nothing about this would necessitate the town's investment. Um, someone was concerned about the steam tunnels and asbestos and environmental concerns out here. Um, also not related to a zoning code change. Um, yeah, this is, this property's been around for a hundred and some years. There are weird things, like under the ground, like steam tunnels, but I know some of them have been closed, or, you know, they're all not being used, and some of them have been, you know, sealed off or otherwise secured. There's nothing about this would require proactively interfering with anything that's still under the ground. Um, and I don't know how many people are concerned about this, but this also is not a historic designation process. We're not looking at um, converting any of these properties to officially designated um, landmarks or historic districts. The Normandy Village co, um, complex is on the National Register of Historic Places. That is because the owners pursued that independently, and the town had nothing to do with it. Um, we have no plan to force designation on anyone, so, so that's not really an issue either. So I think, I think that, you know, that's a lot. It's a lot to talk about. But um, yeah, it's, it was a good exercise. It's something we should have done a while ago, and, and I know people around here love this area, and we're really glad that they're interested enough to participate, so I look forward to hearing the comments.
Okay, um, before I ask the other Commissioners for some, come through, a couple of things that I'd just like to clarify quickly, if I could. Um, so when you, depending on a different area, well, you, you're talking about expanding um, a use bu, by essentially allowing it to stand alone and not be in an, in an uh, office building, but it otherwise could be in an office building, right?
Pretty much, yeah. With a couple of exceptions, like I don't think right now you could have a bowling alley even in an office complex, but the most, a lot of what we're talking about, like even including restaurants, they could be in an office building right now. Um, we're just saying they should be able to stand alone.
But so like, even in, in, say, uh, uh, zone two, um, you're talking about expanding it to allow standalone, but you're also, on the other side, limiting the size to try and uh, address sort of parking issues and things like that?
That, that's correct.
That otherwise theoretically to, right now, could be, someone could be, have some space bigger than five thousand square feet.
Yeah, I mean, but it would have to be part of an office building, so you'd have to have, you know, you'd have to have an office building out here that's like big enough to have another use kind of attached to it. Um, but in theory, yeah, someone could build a larger office building out here and incorporate those sorts of uses into it, under current code.
Okay, and then this C one multi-office park, this is, that's the only, this is the only C one within the, the C one multi-office park uh, within the town of, of Normal. There is C one office district, but that's different than, than what we're talking about here.
That is correct. When this portion of the code was written, it was written specifically for One Normal Plaza.
And when we're done with this thing, whatever it may be, something, nothing, whatever, it's still going to be C one multi-office park. That's gonna be its designation.
Yeah, yep.
And did you talk, I might have missed it, but you talked about the, like, the liquor license stuff at all? Is there anything that needs to be talked about there? If someone wants to open a brew?
Sorry, yeah, I didn't get into a lot of that, and Brian Day, the attorney, is available here, and I'll turn it over to him in a second, but um, the liquor code is separate from zoning code entirely, so, which is why you all never get liquor code stuff. Um, essentially, a restaurant or eating establishment permitted anywhere in town can then go to the Liquor Commission and ask for liquor license. So in theory, like, right now, you could have a deli open up as part of an office building here in One Normal, and that deli could go ask for a liquor license. Um, they're just not, they're not tied together. Um, but Brian, do you want to speak to that a little bit? Yeah. Sorry, I don't know. And Brian, are you talking because you're, oh, there you are.
I'm at, I'm here.
You're good, okay.
Okay. Uh, right, so as Mercy said, right now, um, if there are eating establishments that are allowed within uh, the existing zoning structure, those establishments could right now apply for a liquor license. So we wouldn't be particularly expanding any type of liquor licenses. It's just a matter of now whether standalone buildings would apply for them. That answer your question?
Yeah. And just the, the last thing I would say, and Mercy pointed it out and said it very well, but we're focusing here, and this is for the public, uh, on, on really zoning land use issues, signage issues, and really not anything about public improvements and things of that nature, right?
Yeah, that's technically true, and, but, I mean, I want people to know too that if, if this whole code amendment were approved, there's not some public investment that's waiting in the wings that would be triggered by this. It, it's just, um, there's always a chance for public improvement anywhere in town, but this is not, um, these, that, that's not tied to that in this circumstance at all.
Okay, well, thank you. Those are, those are my uh, four things I wanted to talk about. Commissioners, do you have any uh, questions or comments of Mercy? It's like mics there.
Yeah, just to clarify, um, because I think the, the two, I have two questions. When you say five thousand square feet for a restaurant or liquor establishment, give us a comparable of what if, of an existing one of that size in town?
Um, okay, so I'm, I'm sitting with Greg. I should have mentioned Greg Trummel is sitting in the same room as me. Um, so Red Robin up on Veterans Parkway is forty-five hundred square feet, so. The pub, oh, the pub too, in Uptown? It's about five thousand square feet. I didn't know that. Um, and I believe in the code amend, or the code amendment, I believe I specifically included no drive-throughs, so that, I mean, that right there would be a, a death knell for many, for any common chain that you're thinking of. A drive-through is a must. Um, but yeah, for just size, a size comparison, Red Robin is a good, is a good comparison, if you can somehow not think of it as being on Veterans Parkway.
And and one other question. If and when this comes to a vote, can we amend the code to exclude those uses?
Yeah, yeah, so I should have pointed that out. So this is kind of like, um, I think the last major code revision we did was probably recreational cannabis. You know, you are welcome to take any or all of this, none of it. And then, of course, what you're doing is recommending to the council and they finally approve it. So for the members of the public, that's how this works. The planning commission makes a recommendation. The council approves it. You know, your recommendation can be, you can get down into the weeds and recommend yes, no on different provisions, absolutely.
Okay, I think again
It's not all or nothing.
I think that's helpful for the public to understand that part of the process and for us to understand that too. Thank you.
Anyone else have other questions?
I have one. Um, I think it's for Mercy. Any concerns with the, the road in that area? Cause it's a pretty narrow loop from what I remember kind of driving. If you drive around the, the center part, the sub area two that you're talking about. It's, it's not a, there's enough for two-way traffic, I guess, but it's not very wide. Yeah, is there any concern with if, if this were to go through with the increase in traffic based on the businesses that would be allowed and any uh issues with those roadways that exist currently?
Yeah, so we've talked about that. That's probably like one of the top concerns raised with the property owners that own property inside of One Normal Plaza. We talked to them weeks ago and um there's the concern about parking, but then there's really the concern about traffic, like just vehicles moving around and, you know, safety issues and just crowding issues, et cetera. You're right, the Loop Road is not very wide. It is two-way traffic, but you couldn't put like on-street parking on the Loop Drive and still have two lanes of driving traffic, so. So on the positive side, a narrow road that isn't particularly long also encourages people to drive slowly, so that's a good. It, depending on where parking needs to be, you know, the narrow road doesn't really provide that opportunity. Um, we've, engineering has been part of this discussion though and Public Works as well, and there would be options for traffic calming that you could accomplish with signage and plantings and and that sort of thing. And we just have to evaluate it as time goes on, if anything new were to happen out here.
Thank you.
Mercy, this is Dave. Could you keep talking about parking there to uh while everything's gonna be on a case-by-case basis, maybe a little parking 101, what does that process look like?
Sure, um, so since, since I've worked here, the only real, like significant change I, there was the addition of the Mason's Building to a green space. So when they built out there, we just had to think about, so like, what's the parking demand on a regular basis out there? When are the Masons most likely to need parking? And for them, it's more few evenings a week, um, maybe on a weekend for an event, and then you look at Happy Splashes and when do they tend to have lessons? And when does the theater tend to have their patrons? And you're trying to find a mix that um, that where the timing kind of works out, so, which can be really good, like the baby fold, their employees are mostly there during the day. So then maybe during the evening, there's parking available that isn't available during the workday. So it's, it's really an analysis of like peak uses, in addition to kind of trying to figure out what is our parking or code require elsewhere? Like, we do have, you know, one parking space per however many square feet, depending on the, the type of use. So, so it's kind of a mixture of of all those things. And some of the folks out there have their own parking, um, and some people rely on the, the, the large public parking lot that's right in the middle.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I guess I do have one more. In terms of, can we want to keep the green spaces much as possible? What's the maximum amount of new construction that the uh new code might allow?
That is a good question. We actually looked at it a little bit, like when it came to Normandy Village, we actually kind of tried to figure out how much could they build there? And it turned out, correct me if I'm wrong, it was about one building that you could fit at Normandy Village of the same size. Within sub area two, every, you know, if you, if you're requiring at least fifty percent green space, some of the buildings are under fifty percent right now, and so they could probably add on a little bit. Um, and then you have to figure out, well, if they add on to their building, are they gonna need more parking? Cause they probably won't have room for more parking. Um, so it's not, we haven't done an analysis that would say like in sub area two, you could build this many more square feet. Um, I suppose we could, but if I just pull up like sub area two, we look at this one. You can see that, you know, some of the plots are pretty close to that fifty percent requirement. Some are slightly over, so you know, one, one lot is empty. So this lot over here on the, kind of the east side, the town actually owns that, and so someone could build something there, you know, depending on what it is, who knows how much parking they would need. So it's really site-specific. But just based on these percentages, it's not a ton. So.
And removing existing structures and putting up new structures is also an option. And I should probably correct myself. I said new code. I meant proposed code.
Sure, sure, right. Yeah, I mean, the, there are design requirements in place already that basically require that any new construction generally complement the type of architecture that's out there now. So when the Masons built their building, you know, we did require, well, masonry, but they're Masons, so I guess that was gonna happen anyway. But it's, we don't have a lot of other new construction out there to point to, you know, but, but it would need to fit the character of the area. So, which is also something a lot of developers don't want to deal with, because that might not be the most cost-effective way to build something is to have someone tell you it needs to have a lot more brick and stone.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
I think I dropped off for a second. Everything was frozen for a second. So are there, there no more questions at this point, it sounds like? Or Tracy, you have anything? If no more questions, I guess we can, we can, we can open the public hearing. A couple of things, no, the, the, though, this is our first sort of Zoom format, so bear with us as we, as we get through this. The other thing is I generally uh would, would swear people that, that it comes, state their name, address, affirm to tell the truth and, and, and such. I can't see anybody um other, um, or who's going to be talking, and so Mercy um and Taylor, who's, who's handling the, who's handling the uh waiting room, are going to be the uh crossing guards, if you will, and, and uh letting us know who's going to be, who's gonna be speaking and um, and whatnot. Also, if you do, if you did not get a chance to speak this time, as Mercy noted, you can and you, after this hearing, uh, or meeting, you do want to say something. When it's continued to the, to the uh July ninth meeting, just contact Mercy and get on a list so you can uh say what you want to say. The other things that I'll say is that we generally with, with things like this, just like the, the um Blackstone Trails and marijuana, uh, the marijuana code. Many people may want to get up and talk, and I just ask you, listen to what they say. Um, when you do, you can't state your concerns, uh, your reasons for or against something, but if, if one of your concerns has already been stated, there's no need to necessarily say it again. I mean, whether that concern is said one hundred times or one time, we will give it this, the, 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 the way that is, the same way that is, or same way that it should be given. That being said, though, we really do want to hear from you, so. If you really, really want to talk about it, another concern's already been stated, we just ask you to try and uh abbreviate as much as you can, just so we're mindful of the, of your time, of, of all of you participating, of the staff time and things of that nature. So with that, um, I'll turn it over to you, Mercy.
Okay, great. So I'm gonna let the first person in, and then I think you should still swear them in, but I'm gonna say who they are, because that's how they're getting in, so. If you could, if you could let Julie Heil in, that would be great.
Sure thing. Ms. Heil, you've uh joined the call here.
Except you might still be on mute, Julie. So you'll have to unmute yourself.
Actually, I just did it for her. So Ms. Heil, you're, you're on the call.
Hi.
Great, we can hear you.
That's great.
Ms. Heil, my name is AJ Zimmerman and I'm the chair of the planning commission. I just ask you raise your right hand and affirm to tell the truth, and please feel free to uh, after that, to say what you would like to say.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for um, uh, in making space for this public comment. Um, I am indeed Julie Heil. I live at three oh six West Virginia Avenue in Normal. And um, here's what I have to say. Thanks for the opportunity
To affirm to tell the truth, right?
I, yes, I am a truth teller.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for the opportunity to address the planning commission as you consider updating the One Normal Plaza planned unit development for the first time in twenty-seven years. Normandy Village, as you have noted, is located on a little more than six acres in the One Normal Plaza sub area four. The village has been my professional home for fifteen years. I love its four Sentinel Cottonwoods to the east, its Tudor cottages, its um central grassy promenade, its gardens, which we make better every year as we can, the fireflies that lift at night, fall as night falls this time of year. This love of the village led my partner Bob Broad and me to purchase this property in late twenty sixteen with an eye toward protecting and preserving the space for the long term. Bob, as you also know, is a member of this commission and he has appropriately recused himself from this discussion and vote. My adult children are also residents of sub area four as well, and um they are devoted next generation members of the neighborhood. Normandy Village was completed in nineteen thirty-one as part of the Illinois Soldiers and Sailors Children's School. We admire the powerful blend of public service and private enterprise that brought Children's Village to life in nineteen thirty-one. And we seek to simultaneously restore its historic and beautiful character and to refurbish it in keeping with a twenty-second century vision of energy efficiency, environmental stewardship, economy and comfort. My family and I support the town staff's recommended changes to the One Normal Plaza PUD. Our intentions for the village as part of the greater ISSCS campus align with the town's comprehensive plan, which looks to make the most of One Normal Plaza as a special center with incredible potential, this is a quote from the comp plan, incredible potential for its unique mix of institutional, recreational, commercial and residential uses in a serene setting, end quote. We are eager to reconnect the campus to Normal's legacy of caring for families, support for a possible food innovation district, underscore its history along the Mother Road, and invite our neighbors into a natural gathering place, a place for connection and community building. We see these elements as an inviting compliment to the investments that have been made in Uptown to the Southwest. I appreciate the pro- proposed plan's slighter greater, slightly greater flexibility for the options it provides us as we work out the commercial mix that will best enliven this space for us all. We understand the reservations that have been voiced about a plant, one plan that was proposed for the small batch brewery in sub area two inside the Loop. And we understand that those plans may be somewhat on hold at this time. But I just wanted to say that after listening closely to that brewer, the gentleman who introduced the idea, I came to believe that that little business, done right, could usher in precisely the family-oriented, good-natured, moderately paced, third-place the new PUD in tents for One Normal Plaza. It'd be, it would have been lovely to be able to finish a long day at work and walk across the green to an inviting table and a libation with family or friends while afternoon rays filtered through the gymnasium's big windows. Again, thanks to the McLean County Planning Commission for the vision it has offered on O N P. Thanks to town staff for advancing the recommendations. My family and I look forward to generations of partnership with you all in making Normandy Village and the surround, surrounding area shine. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heil. Do any commissioners have questions, uh, Ms. Heil?
I, I have one. You, you mentioned food innovation. Can you explain to us what you mean by food innovation?
Appreciate the question, um, Mike. I can't really explain, because what we are doing is remaining open to all possibilities. We know that food innovation was one of the ideas put forth by the regional planning commission in the comp plan. And we are aware that that, that could include a wide range of, um, of, of, again, small uh business-type enterprises having to do with food preparation from local organic farms, um, maybe a small farmer's market. Perhaps um, a space where um, uh, a, a, a commercial kitchen where either um incubation of food stuffs um, on an entrepreneurial level could be uh, uh, created and, and sold to the public. I think that the whole food innovation uh industry is growing. And I know that we are surrounded by marvelous farmland and we've got um, good people creating healthy food and uh looking in some cases for opportunities to um bring it to market.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anyone else have any questions? If, if not, uh, thank you, Ms. Heil. I appreciate you, um, I appreciate your comments and, and, um, and, and, and your position.
Thank you.
Okay, so do you want me to call in the next person, Mr. Zimmerman?
Sure, please.
Okay, so the next person is Yamina Hernandez. Taylor will have to let her in.
Yep, uh, hello, Ms. Hernandez, you're on the call here.
Oh, hello.
Ms. Hernandez, my name is AJ. Is AJ Zimmerman?
Hi, thank you for taking your call.
Yeah. Of the planning commission, what I'd ask you to do is just state your name and uh, raise your right hand and affirm to tell the truth, and then we will uh, be happy to listen to your position.
Hello, my name is Yamina Hernandez. I have my right hand raised and I swear to tell the truth.
Wonderful. Please go ahead with, with, um, with your comments.
Okay, I have a question. I live in uh sub area four. The Normandy Village and Park.
Okay.
And um, I noticed that in the recommended in the proposal, it says outdoor events. And it says uh, the ten PM limits, Sunday through Thursday, eleven PM limit, Friday through Saturday. What exactly, or what area exactly would outdoor, would these outdoor events be in? Would it be right behind? Would it be right behind 900 Beach Street? And, um, is there a limit on the amount of people that can be there? And is there, will alcohol be permitted for these outdoor activities?
So those are good questions, Ms. Hernandez. So, um, and so for those of you looking at the screen now, um, huh? No, I'm, I'm not muted. Yeah, I'm good. So, so they live down here at this, this house. So you, you know, you're really surrounded by the park. Um, as far as, there are certain types of outdoor events that kind of happen anywhere in town that are kind of a little bit unrelated to zoning, where you may have the odd festival-type thing, or like, like bocce at the village happens once a year out at, at Normandy, um, where the town has permits for things like amplified sound. Um, liquor is a specific issue, and Brian could speak to that if I say anything wrong. But, um, if somebody doesn't have a liquor license at Normandy Village, if a business doesn't have a liquor license, then an event can't have liquor. There has to be a vendor there who has a liquor license, and there's a certain kind of procedure they go through for that. Um, so, so it's, you know, those sorts of outdoor events aren't really, they're not exactly zoning because they're not happening all the time. Um, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Greg, but they're a little bit more just, you know, because you, they're just, they kind of happen, and we, we figure them through at that time. Now, I will say, though, that there's a ton of outdoor activity at the park already. So that, that, you know, that will continue to happen as far as I know. Um, but Brian, do you want to say anything else about how liquor licenses happen for events?
Uh, we do have a liquor license available for events. Typically, I mean, it has to be on private property, so it can't be on any town-owned property, so there won't be any liquor on town property. Um, there is a special application, an, an event-based application where certain vendors can get a liquor license for private events, and they would have to go through our clerk's office for that.
Yeah. So in this, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Um, just so, just to clarify, the outdoor events, then, where, where would that space be rented? Would it be in that space right behind my house? Or would it be?
Well, as far, so as far as, as far as the zoning code goes, we didn't write the zoning code to, like, turn into code outdoor events. Like, we're not saying this is now being zoned for routine, constant outdoor events. It, it would just be the case that, on occasion, the owners of Normandy Village, the Heil-Broads or whomever might own it in the future, may want to have occasional outdoor events, and we would just treat that like we would on any private commercial property to make sure that what they're doing makes sense, that it's not, you know, they have what they need, they have restrooms, they have parking, whatever they need. Um, what we're, what we're suggesting in this code amendment isn't to, like, encourage, like, more routine outdoor events. Um, the property directly behind your house is owned by the town. So that's, you know, there's a little sliver of, of the Heil-Broads' property next to their driveway, but I, I don't imagine that would ever be like a prime area for an event. When, when the Heil-Broads have had events at their property, they've been a little bit more towards the center, um, or just the places where there's more green space. So, um, the bocce tournament, I think they actually partner with the town, though, and some of the bocce playing actually happens on our park property.
Okay, yeah, I, I guess I think that was my concern because I'm like, outdoor events, I didn't know if it was going to be like an outside concert or something where there would be a huge amount of people, um, that perhaps might spill over onto our property, and we may have, you know, issues or concerns with, you know, people, um, you know. So that's why I asked if, if there is going to be, like, what kind of outdoor events, first of all? And, um, um, is there a limit on the amount of people and so that we don't run into any issues with something happening? And again, you know, uh, uh, an event spilling into our yard or something like that.
Right, right. Yeah, it's a good question, and it's just, that is something that falls outside. It doesn't really fall within this code amendment because, again, special outdoor events just kind of have a special process that apply to either park property or just commercial properties throughout the community. So we'd be looking at those on a case-by-case basis. Um, but nothing about this code is saying there should be more of those or less of those. It just really doesn't, you know, pertain on any regular basis. Yeah, I mean, we have, I mean, police involved-
So there is no set amount of, like, only so much, so many people per outdoor event?
No, no, there's no rule like that. I don't, I don't think there's a hard and fast rule like that anywhere, but it's all analyzed. Like, if somebody wants to have, like, a mass gathering or some sort of event without, like, amplified sound, it all goes through town staff and the police. And we just look at, like, well, what is the plan? Like, where are you going to put people, and how late is this? But it's, it's really case by case. Um, and then certainly, if it doesn't go well, we hear for, we hear from the neighbors, and it probably won't happen again. So, um, so, yeah, but the zoning code doesn't really pertain to that, like, what we're talking about tonight. So, yeah. But it's a good question. I mean, you live there. That makes sense that you'd be concerned.
Yeah. Um, another question is, I, I also read about the town, uh, who wants to, so I think it says, to commit on capitalizing on the economic development and potential use of Route 66. Is, is the purpose of that to try to bring tourism into the area? Or, or to build things that could, um, increase traffic into the Normandy Plaza area?
You know, not exactly. Again, like, when it comes to just building more stuff at One Normal Plaza, even the way the code is being proposed, it's pretty restrictive. There's only so much you could actually build in One Normal Plaza. Like, it just, it won't hold that much stuff. Um, but as far as, like, why are we even thinking about attracting more people? Um, we know, we know that people come through Normal every year, and probably thousands of people, um, who are driving Route 66 from Chicago to California or some part of it. And people who drive Route 66 often start in Chicago, so they're, they're almost certainly going through Normal. And when you look at the tourism, marketing materials statewide and nationally, uh, do you see Normal mentioned? No, you don't. Because we've never really tried to say, here we are, stop here, we've got great things for you to see. Um, so we've, you know, we find out, you look at the, the marketing stuff, and people are stopping in Pontiac and Atlanta. Tiny little Atlanta, Illinois is attracting a whole lot of people to stop and take pictures and eat at their, is it the Palms in Atlanta? So I think there's just some thinking that, like, Route 66 is one of the most famous things in all of America. People come from across the world to go to Route 66. And the fact that it's coming through Normal is something we, we should at least pay some attention to, and maybe to get people to pull off and just appreciate a part of Normal. It would just be fantastic. And for roads, for people who are traveling a road like that, they're the kind of people who do want to pull over and see a historic site or stop at an interesting little independently-owned business. Um, but these people are already coming through. Like, I don't think by improving One Normal Plaza, we have any illusion that we're going to increase actual tran- visitor traffic on Route 66. We just want them to stop, maybe spend some money. But, uh, yeah, so that's the thinking.
Okay. Um, and then just one more question. Um, under the SubArea 4, where it says permitted uses and no space limitation, it says dwelling, two-family, limited to max of two unrelated individuals. Can you please clarify what that means?
Yeah, so, uh, limited to two unrelated people just means that you couldn't, well, you can only have two unrelated people. So near, in a, in a university community, oftentimes what that means is that you can't have, like, three or four students living together. Um, it just basically limits it to more like a single family with a border, perhaps, that's your second unrelated person. Um, so we just, the character of One Normal Plaza really hasn't historically been multifamily. Um, and the Normandy Village itself is small enough that limiting it to the two unrelated seemed, seemed reasonable. Um, so, so, yeah, I, I don't know if that answers your question.
So specifically then for my house, it's a single-family home?
Yeah, for your house.
So I wouldn't be able to have more than two unrelated people living with me?
That is correct.
Like, in addition to my family?
Yes, in addition to your family, you could have one unrelated person living with you. So that's the, that, that would be like the case anywhere in single-family zoning in Normal.
Did you say one unrelated individual?
In addition to your family, yes, yes. Because then you, that would be the two unrelated people, is your family and this other unrelated person.
Okay. Well, how would that apply, um, or would that apply to, let's just say, elder parents?
No, no, it doesn't apply to, like, family means your blood relations, a foster child, an adopted child. Like, it's, yeah, it could be multi-generational already. That's, that's not an unrelated. It truly means a not-related person.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure, because I'm like-
No, it's a good question.
We're not sure whether we want to, you know, uh, in the future, you know, for our parents, you know, we want to take care of them. We want to make sure that it's not going to be, like, illegal to have our parents here, if it ever came to the-
I'm pretty sure my adult children and my adult parents will be living with us at some point. So that's, that's going to be all of us. So, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any other questions? No, thank you very much. Those were my questions.
Okay, great.
One, one second, um, Ms. Hernandez. Does anyone, any commissioner have a que- any question, uh, uh, that they'd like to ask Ms. Hernandez? Not hearing any. Um, thank you for your, for your comments. I appreciate you, um, speaking and taking the time to, to let us know your, your thoughts.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Yep.
All right, I think we are ready to, uh, I think we're ready to let in the last person who's in the waiting room right now. So Taylor, if you would like to let this participant in, that would be great.
Sure thing, just a moment.
Be Christy.
Uh, hello, ma'am, you've joined the call here.
Hi.
Excellent. Is this Christy?
Yes, this is.
Okay, Christy, it's Mercy Davison. So A.J., I'll turn it over to you. This is Christy Bane.
Hey, Christy, uh, yeah, I, my name's A.J. Zimmerman. I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission. And I would just ask, do you state your name and raise your right hand and affirm to tell the truth? And then we're happy to listen to any concern or, or position you may have.
Okay, um, no problem. Um, I, Christy Bane, promised to tell the truth.
Perfect.
Awesome, thank you.
Um, okay. Okay, yeah, I just have a few things that are concerns that I have that I would just like to put out there. Um, as far as my family goes, the way the zoning currently is fine with us. We've been here for a number of years. Um, I don't have a huge, you know, problem with the current issues with the way the zoning is. But if the proposal's approved, then I feel like there's going to be significant negative impacts to our residential area. Um, one of my main concerns would be having standalone restaurants, liquor establishments. Um, just those people coming from that, being in our residential area, creating noise, disturbances, driving down our street, you know, possibly if people were to have too much. Um, just not having a bar in my neighborhood is something that I would ever want to have. And those types of businesses also draw large crowds. Um, we currently have no city noise, no traffic over here with the way things are. And like I said, now, it, that's why I'm fine with everything. Um, but this change would obviously cost Beach Street and other surrounding streets to have an influx of traffic. Um, I mean, what is being proposed would change everything. The volume of people, the volume of cars, noise levels. The biggest one for me would be parking on our street. And this is something that we've had issues with before. Um, with the, in the fall mainly, with the football games across the street. That's something we just know to put up with and we deal with, but that's not something that I care to have every day of the week in my neighborhood. Um, with the football games, we have anywhere from probably, I don't know, five to 10 cars that will park on our street. And, um, and then they walk over. Um, so that is a concern. Um, and then this area, in my opinion, had enough issues before when the abandoned infirmaries were standing, and no one really ever prioritized enforcing the owner to either fix up the building or tear it down. But now, I feel like the town just wants to create more businesses that's just going to cause additional disturbances and devalue our property. Um, the proposal says that the parking spaces would be limited, so that means that people will be parking on my street daily, if that is the case. Um, and I, like I already expressed about the issues we have in the fall, um, I didn't really ever purchase my property, ever thinking that there would be these newly proposed changes. Now, I, now I am kind of understanding some of the stuff you were talking about in the beginning with some of these things were already allowed. But the standalone part is the biggest thing for me. Um, when I purchased my home, I was told that nothing like these proposed changes would be developed. I, I researched this and made phone calls, and I was told that nothing like any of those things, gas stations, restaurants, anything like that would ever be developed in this area due to it being a historical area. So I guess, just in summary, if this proposal is approved, this would create disruptions to many of the residential areas around here with just, mainly, I guess, my biggest concern is just the excess traffic, parking issues, and just noise level, um, concerns such as those.
Well, thank you. Um, does anyone have any questions? Hearing none. Um, so, did, did you li- you heard Mercy talk about the, the, the parking? How that, I mean, how, well, I guess a few things that come to mind, and I just wanted just to get your take on, on those. One, like, you, that these, these, a lot of this could, could actually be done today and are simply not. Um, the fact that, that they're proposing limiting the, the size of the, of the, uh, establishment to 5,000 square feet, is that in any way, um?
But my, my concern with that is just- Um, I'm sorry, I'm, my concern with that is just there's not enough parking to begin with over there. That's why the spillover comes from the football games, because even though there is a larger parking lot, those people choose to come over here to park. And if you're adding business, I mean, you know, one business maybe, but like, if you're adding, you know, in the future down the road, you're adding business after business, um, that changes a lot as well. And just my biggest concern would be the noise level. Just, just the liquor part of it is concerning to me. And, and, you know, just having, I mean, we also have students that are going to go over there as well, if there's something like that, so.
Okay, well, yeah, I appreciate your, I appreciate your concern in your comments. Um, do anyone have any questions, um, additionally? Not hearing any. Um, Christy, I appreciate you, uh, taking the time to come and, and speak with us and, and, and let us hear what you have to say. It's very helpful.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Awesome. So, um, no more co- no more, um, people that want to speak?
There's no one else in the waiting room. I will, I will just say that, um, we had one person in the waiting room who dropped out, and I know who she is. I'll follow up with her and make sure there wasn't a technical problem, or maybe she had something come up, and she's welcome to come back in July. We also had one person call in that we didn't know about. So because we didn't recognize the name or number, we weren't able to admit them to the meeting. So whomever that person is, if you're still watching or listening, get in touch with me tomorrow, and we can make sure it works in July, um, because we have another month.
And the other thing is, we, we have had, I think, at least five letters that I've, that I've read, right?
Mm-hmm. Yes, I have forwarded all of the comments that people have sent to me that they asked me to send on to you. So anytime someone sends me comments, because they're only addressing it to me, I don't like to forward emails on without people's permission because that might not be how they want it to be written to someone else. So I always ask people if they want me to forward it. So if anyone listening sent me an email, and it wasn't clear that I should be sending that on, I did not. But there were probably five that I sent, sent on to the commission and put in the clerk's file. So it's part of the record.
Okay. And as Mercy said, if you're still listening and you want to talk, you want to have your position known, just contact her, uh, or maybe Taylor, uh, and get on, get on the list so you can. Um, to the extent that we're doing this again next month, uh, you can speak, because we'd love to hear from you.
Mm-hmm, right. And if people want to just email, if they don't want to talk next, uh, meeting, but they have questions, like specific questions or just other comments, I'm, I'm happy to get those via email. If planning commissioners have questions for me, you're welcome to email those to me as well. Um, I would like to come to the July 9th meeting with something new to say. I would like to come to the July 9th meeting with something new to say because I'm not going to repeat everything I just said. So if there are specific things that people think they want some more detail on, just let me know. I mean, I have some ideas based on the input we got, so. Do you have anything you want to say? Let me see if Mr. Tremel has anything to say.
Possible that this could be an in-person meeting in July.
Oh, yeah, we don't know if the July 9th meeting will be in-person or on Zoom or some strange hybrid of that. So we will just, we're going to have to just play it by ear. It depends on what the governor has to say about what phase we're in, so. But I appreciate everyone's patience. I thought this went, you know, pretty well.
Yeah, it went pretty well. So the plan going is, we're not going to vote in any way. So would we just need a motion to carry all of this over to the July 9th meeting?
I think so. Is that right, Mr. Day? Just a vote to carry over?
Yeah, a motion to carry the meeting over until the next meeting.
Mike made the motion any second.
A second. Or Tracy will say it.
Mercy, you want to call roll?
I really do, but I got to find my list. Okay.
Before we make that motion, can we specify that's going to be?
To July 9?
It's going to be July 9th at 5 o'clock. We are probably, because we don't know if it's going to be Zoom or in-person, we're probably going to have to send out publication anyway, so. But yeah, so we're going to continue this until July 9th at 5 o'clock.
Okay. Are y'all happy to, that's the motion, huh?
My motion include that.
Okay.
It's like we're good.
Okay, cool. I will call the roll. Mr. Shields?
Hi.
Ms. Wittergren?
Yes.
Mr., oh, not Mr. Broad, Mr. Johnny?
Yes.
Mr. Bozer? Oh, Mr. Bozer, are you muted? Ooh, he's gone dark. Okay. Technical problem. Mr. Mateka?
Hi.
And Mr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Great. Okay, super. We will, we will talk, I will talk to the attorney about how we will notice people for this, so. And we will, I think we will mostly, we may have another item on the agenda meeting, so. So let me know if you cannot attend. That would be good to know.
Awesome. It was good seeing you all.
Yes.
Likewise.
Super. Okay, well, wherever you are, drive safely to wherever you're going next. Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.
See you, guys. Thank you.